See the evidence group that way.
The County Board of Supervisors' June 18th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places and posted on the county website on June 13, 2024. In addition, on Thursday, June 13, 2024, 3:06 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email.
How's it?
That complies with the open meetings law.
Your roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
What's on, but he left right before the meeting started, hopefully.
He's probably going to lock back on in a minute. Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wornall.
Here.
Pamela Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Frances Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonner Price.
Here.
Everybody except Brad, who should be coming back momentarily.
Okay, our pledges, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Need a motion on the agenda? Here, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we approve the agenda, I would like to comment Agenda Item Number 13B, which is the appointment of citizen members to Health and Human Services Committee. I have a question regarding whether our notice reasonably apprises the public of what we will be discussing, in that there are none of the candidates for the Citizen Committee are listed on the agenda. So the public has no knowledge of who's proposed to be on that committee, and I feel like that's something that should be included.
Any other comments? Would it be appropriate to address that?
Certainly. I believe that the notice on the agenda of the appointments to that committee reasonably apprises the public of what the county board is going to be considering tonight, and clearly did apprise the public. It looks as if two of the applicants for those seats are here. I presume to speak during public comment. So I don't believe that we're running afoul of the open meetings law.
Any other comments? Okay, that mind on favor of the the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. Same sign. Need a motion on the matters offered for adoption by the two townships?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made and and seconded. Any discussion on the resolutions? And the correction of the publishing of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All same sign. Any public comment? Miss Magnifici.
I'm Hooper's.
Okay. Don't have to fight it.
Oh, I'm Paula Dare from Luck. I've been here before. I'm sure many of you remember me. To the new board, I am the current Wisconsin Horse Council District One President and also President of the Northwest Wisconsin Equestrian Friends. I'm here tonight. I provided the clerk with some important information regarding a couple of different important topics. One is Wisconsin, horses in Wisconsin, serious business, which describes the positive huge economic impact that horses have survived. The state of Wisconsin, over $2.24 billion. And I left this brochure with the clerk, and I hope you can take a look at it. And the other one describes the tremendous and unique services that horses provide as far as therapy for health problems, both mental and physical. There's no age restriction from little children to the elderly, handicapped, broken. It's horses do so much for us in so many ways as far as health benefits, and this other brochure kind of highlights that topic. So I hope you can recognize that you don't have to ride a bike or walk, that horses can do so much for everyone. So get a life and get a horse. And I'd also like to thank the board for all the wonderful work you've helped us get through in the past year, and we look forward to working with you all in the future. So thank you all.
Mr. Jefferson, I ask a question of the council. For what? On the Sower Trail, did It's out of order right now. It's coming up.
That topic is on the agenda, and we also have a closed session.
Hey, you want to still?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gay Magda Fichi, and I'm interested in being a citizen member of the Health and Human Services Committee. I spent my entire life, my entire career in the healthcare field. During my junior and senior year of high school, I worked at the Golden Age Manor in Amory, and after graduation, I began working at a state institution for the developmentally disabled. And while working there full time, I went to college to become a registered nurse. I've worked in neonatal intensive care, medical surgical, Peds ICU, emergency room, oncology, and sedation and procedures. I retired from nursing in 2017, and in 2018, I was elected to the Wisconsin State Assembly. I've served on the Health Committee, Aging and Long-Term Care, Mental Health, and Substance Use and Prevention. I have authored, two of the bills that I authored did become laws. They dealt with workplace violence, and it made a Class H felony to commit battery against healthcare workers. I was also author of the APRN Modernization Act Bill, the last two sessions that was vetoed by the governor. This bill would have allowed nurse practitioners to work independently within their scope of practice. And that's one of the main reasons I ran for the assembly was to make healthcare more accessible and affordable. But this bill was vetoed. This is a law in 27 other states that allow this to happen, so just very disappointing. But I've enjoyed working in the legislature. I've always said, it's like nursing. It's just a different way of taking care of people. I'll be retiring at the end of my term in January, and I've never intended on being a career politician. It's time for some new blood, new ideas. I was truly honored to serve, so thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else? Ryan?
Hello, I'm Ryan Wood. I live with my wife and our two soon-to-be-three daughters in Milltown. I had the honor of serving on this board from '22 to 2024. I was also a member of the General Government and Health and Human Services Committees. For context, I've also submitted an application to be a citizen member of the Health and Human Services Committee. With my background and experience as a public school teacher, coach, and mentor, with her firsthand experience, excuse me, in addressing the public health issues that students and families face, I do think that I would be an incredible asset to that committee and in service to the county. I'm not here, though, to advocate for my appointment to that committee, but to strongly urge the county administrator to reappoint the current citizen members who wish to continue their service for another term. Even though I would be honored to have the opportunity to serve Polk County once again, the reason I urge this can be summed up with three main points. Number one, the current citizen members of HHS are some of the most qualified and respected people that Polk County can ask for. Taking each of those people individually, you'd be hard-pressed to find a reason to look them in the eye and say, you don't deserve to continue the work you've done over the past several terms. Number two, I understand that current board members would like to establish staggered terms for citizen members. If that's what the people of Polk County and the members of this board would like to implement, I fully stand behind that. And I believe it'd be properly implemented in the next election cycle, much better than hastily being thrown together at the 11th hour. And finally, number three, I've heard rumblings that the reason the county leadership feels like they have to remove one of the current citizen members is because of political pressure to add a specific candidate. I can say with confidence that the last thing the people of Polk County want is for this boardroom to be dictated by political agendas. One of the people being considered for appointment to the HHS Committee, with all due respect, Ms. Magda Fichi, is the same person whose household contributed thousands of dollars to a group that sent these out during the spring election. That's me, pictured next to somebody sitting on the street shooting up drugs, accompanied by blatant lies and an attempt to discredit me and my standing within the community I grew up in and am now raising our children in. And her colleagues, who also contributed thousands of dollars to the shameless campaign, are some of the loudest voices trying to bully county leadership in catering to their agenda. I have no argument against Ms. Magda Fichi's experience and qualifications, but I strongly believe that her political connections and actions have demonstrated that she is not the best fit to serve the county at this time. So when you make this decision, you're not only choosing who will serve on a committee, you're also choosing whether or not the county endorses the exact kind of behavior that the public wants to see removed from the way our local government operates. We are neighbors in a tight-knit community. For that reason, I strongly urge you to reappoint the current citizen members of HHS and establish a clear and accessible plan for new members to be considered in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right now, close the public comments. Considerations for closed session reference to litigation at the Sower Trail. Next on the agenda?
We have Attorney Matt Tome from Atolus Law. He is remote by teams, and I believe we can make him a panelist. And if Supervisor Olson is on there, make him a panelist. And then when we reconvene in open session, we can get everyone else back. But first, we need a motion.
Motion to go into closed sessions according to statute, Wisconsin statute 19.851G.
Second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Before the end of motion, any discussion reference to that? Hearing none.
I would ask that the staff that is currently in the room be allowed to remain.
Oh, absolutely. I don't know what we do without them. Okay.
You're looking younger than I am.
There any action, Councilor, that we might take?
I don't think you need to take any action. I think. I don't know if Matt is still on, but I think the board made its wishes clear, and so we'll just wait to hear back from him. I will work with Mr. Tome, the administrator will, and I'll keep.
So you want a confirmation of?
I don't think there's anything for the board to vote on. It was kind of a general consensus. Anybody disagrees, please let me know.
All right.
And so I can go briefly into the Wisconsin Realtors Association claim. That was where the State Association of Realtors brought lawsuits against Polk County specifically challenging our zoning ordinances. One is it relates to tourist rooming houses where we required a conditional use permit to go above a certain amount of overnights in rentals and a few other things. And then also on our back lot development regulations where we've got non riparian lots having access to navigable waters. And so kind of the over, the concern about overuse of our natural resources. I, we never got to the merits of the claim. We filed a motion to dismiss, asking the court to decide that the Realtors Association lacked standing to bring the lawsuit. There is something in Wisconsin called organizational standing, and it means that generally speaking, an organization that has a specific purpose and its members, if any member of that organization has the standing to sue, the organization can sue on their behalf. We effectively argued that while members of their organization could have standing, their standing was based more on the fact that they were property owners, not that they were realtors. And that was pretty nuanced. We had oral argument, two sets of briefs, and ultimately we had oral ruling scheduled, and then they were rescheduled because of the court's calendar. Some of the folks in this room came to support me during that hearing, and I really appreciate that. You know who you are. But we prevailed. So now we wait to see if they appeal or if there's another suit.
All right. Now we'll go to number nine. Resolution, I think, 2824. If Brad is here, he's probably most obvious one to address the resolution as presented. Can you bring that up, sir?
Yeah, I'm here, Jay.
Okay. Go ahead and make a motion, if you wish, to Resolution 2824.
So can I make a motion?
You can, yes.
So I make a motion to approve Resolution 2824, which is a resolution advocating for an inpatient universal health facility for northern Wisconsin. I just want to note that this came out of the Health and Human Services Committee with a positive recommendation to the county board.
Fine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second it.
Okay, we've got several of them.
Almost second.
Seconded by Brad. Any discussion in reference to Resolution 24? Any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution 2224 is proposed. If I have a say in eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we've got Resolutions 29 24 to create an ad hoc committee. I need a motion on that.
Motion to bring it for the floor for discussion.
Motion made to bring the ad hoc committee resolution to the
I second.
to the board for discussion, seconded. All in favor of that proposal. Bye bye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, go ahead with the discussion. Go ahead.
Me?
Well, you brought the resol, you, you brought.
You know, I think it's a perfect opportunity to put a group together to talk to the St. Gray Hospital about, you know, their new hospital that's coming in behind, over by Menards there that we could maybe get our foot in the door for healthcare, mental healthcare for people, because the distance we have to travel to provide that service to people is just getting out of hand. And the facility closed, so it made it all the worse. So, you know, I think we need to put a committee together to talk to the people at the hospital about, you know, how do we go about it? Start looking for grant money, start looking for anything we can to facilitate it. I don't know how far out the hospital is, but you know, it's something that came up in public, Public Safety and Public Works and, and then obviously the health and services and calls. I'm in favor.
More discussion?
Russ has blocked me again.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I just want to first say that I'm in favor of this as well. This also came out of Health and Human Services with a positive recommendation. I just have a quick question. I, it's my understanding that our county board chair is who creates an ad hoc committee and proposes the members of that committee. Is that correct?
There are various ways of creating ad hoc committees in your rules of order, but this resolution, yes, would do that, authorize the county board chair to appoint those members.
Okay.
Question? Go ahead.
I think I'd be, you know, the more information we get from the more people, the better. And what we really need on this is I, this was a resolution came out from the steering committee that I brought last year to the General Assembly. It was one of five from Polk County. They all passed without any dissension, and it went to the legislature and in, in, passed in the legislature, I believe it was probably in '22. The legislature approved enough money to build the facility, and somehow they couldn't find enough money to operate it. There's such a shortage of nurses and, and the necessary personnel. So that's one aspect that we have to, that we have to come into realization, and it's not just building a facility. There's 11 counties have gotten together on the same thing and have passed this. And it puts so much pressure, because Winnebago right now is the, I believe, the only one that is in the scope. There was a facility in Eau Claire and Triple Falls that both went out of business. And at one of the legislative meetings, the sheriff Knudsen from St. Craig County was there, and he just broke down and cried. He said, "I can't operate my, my unit," he said, "and I just don't have enough people and personnel to transport." And when you have a facility that's far, far away and, and now that there has to be licensed people to transport, there's, it's just a complicated thing that, yeah. The more pressure we can get and, don't be afraid to call your legislatures and tell them that, that this is our
This is.
topic.
Okay, thank you. Any more comment? But however, let's keep it to the fact that we're trying to, we're talking about creating a committee. What the committee is going to do. So let's keep the comments and, and proposals as to whether or not we should adopt a committee. That's what the discussion is about. Anybody have any more discussion about whether or not we should adopt a committee or not? If not, we entertain a motion to close the discussion session.
Motion to close the discussion session.
Motion made and seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor of that? Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Now we need a resolution to pass, or a method to pass the resolution, I should say.
Motion to approve 2924.
Motion made to approve 2924. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnny. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we're moving to 10. Committee as a whole need a motion to go into the the committee as a whole.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, going into the whole discussion of, of recycling center fees.
Through the, through this to the handout, Johnny, is to, is the discussion going on the potential of having a recycling fee for the county. Currently, we're the only material recovery facility in Murf state that does not implement a fee of any sort. And in your packet, it has all the counties and dollar amounts that they impose. It would be a one-time fee beginning of each year. The purpose of the fee would be to basically make the recycling center solvent on its own, and we would turn it into a
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
Enterprise, yeah.
To where it would be able to fund everything itself. On the last page of the handout, and I'm going to just kind of jump off over right now, the past page of the handout have the, our equipment needs after we get the remodel completed. And what this fee would do is it would save for that. So on your handout, it has, we have some proposals on what it would look like for 2025, 2026, and the savings would go toward either back toward the general fund or future positions such as law enforcement or whatever you all would determine.
Yeah, a little history on that. You know, back in 1990, when the recycling laws came out and the county decided to open up a recycling center, Barron County opened up an incinerator, Pierce County opened up a recycling center. The county put in a, to help the cost of these facilities. The county decided to go and utilize the levy and then the price on the open market for the commodities coming in to sustain that facility. What we're facing now is, as we get into tight levies and a flat levy and, and looking for dollars and everything, this would allow us to free up approximately $300,000 to $400,000 in levy each year. That's currently going to that facility and make it stand on its own and be solvent on its own. Again, the equipment needs that Rod listed, you know, will, will help us in the future expand that facility to the point of taking single stream, which our haulers are very interested in, the water mints and others are very interested in single stream. And what that means is they don't have to separate the recycling that comes in that facility. It dumps it and the equipment then separates it. We can still have our coal metal bins, bins like we currently have, but it allows them just to have that one curb pickup and then drop them up at our facility. One of the thoughts of what these levy dollars are is, is one of the priorities is substance abuse and law enforcement on and infrastructure. With freeing up those levy dollars, working with the sheriff in Don Burrows, you know, they got a grant to possibly fund three, three more law officers at a percentage for the first three years. And after that, the shift in levy would cover those new officer costs. So that would help us out in the law enforcement, getting more boots on the ground, helping us in law enforcement. And again, making, making the enterprise fund stand on its own. And with that, you know, the equipment we currently have in there has been a conception. So since 1990, we have been running this equipment. It's been, it's been working. It's been going. But once this equipment's paid, that fund would be used for the ongoing forklifts, stuff like that. Then at a certain point, that fund would be at a point where it could give money back to the general fund every year. Instead of just building it up to millions and millions of dollars, it would come back and, and actually be a generator that way too. So now that we're in budget time, we thought we'd throw this out there as looking at options as another level lever to free up levy, not only for not really looking at 2025, but looking at '26 and beyond to help fund positions and those salaries in law enforcement.
There was some concern about who would actually, the fee would go to and go against. So on the third page of your handout, I have them marked residential, commercial, and manufacturing. So local farmers that have additional fields and additional outbuildings, they would not get additional $30, whatever the fee per year would be. And that other category on the bottom of that line right there, that's what some of those are. It is farmers that have additional outbuildings on a separate piece of land. So they would only be getting what would be an improved, on anything improved for the residential, the commercial, and the manufacturing. So if you look at your parcel count at the top, there's a total land and improvement. So those numbers are just the top three of the improved side. None of the other.
So wouldn't, so if you had 10 parcels, parcels and you only had house on one, how much would you be charged?
$30. That, that's what we had talked about is a $30 fee. So the person that has 40 acres of hunting land with no improvements on it, they wouldn't get a, it's going to be on their tax bill.
Any more questions?
At least just arbitrary numbers.
Yeah, the $30 was not the highest and not the lowest throughout the state. So we just kind of went in the middle where we came up with that. And we were looking at not only how much levy we're currently using. We allocate around $330,000, $350,000 in levy to the recycling center. If they have a good year, great. If they have a bad year, then it's covered by a general fund and levy. The overages or the deficit for running a facility if the commodities are down.
To be clear, this is not the only way that we could fund three positions for the sheriff's department. Correct? Wait, what's that? This is not the only way that we could fund the money for the sheriff's position.
No, there's other ways to do that. It puts a constraint on the rest of the budget though.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Brad.
I just, did the Public Works, Public Safety Committee have a recommendation when they sent us to the county board?
He did not send, there's no resolution. This is just informational, introducing the, the topic.
Okay, because I know they discussed it, so I.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Been trying to get crops in, so I sit at the Cushing Field Mill a lot, waiting for spreaders, waiting for spray, waiting for this and that. And so every time somebody pull into the recycling bin, I go talk to them. Ask them, you know, how's it go? What do you think of it? See, I didn't find a single negative thing said about recycling at all there. I mean, everybody seems real pleased with the service, so just feedback. Thanks.
No, go ahead.
How much money do we have into some of this already? I mean, we've put some ARPA money in there and stuff. They're working on it now. Is this over and above that, this last page?
Correct.
This is over and above what we are putting in?
Yes, the ARPA money is just covering the remodel and the building upgrade.
Okay. And this is what would be needed, what, in what timeframe?
We'd like it in the next couple of years, obviously.
So it's not a CIP, it's not a, is it correct? We have it in there?
We'd be looking at probably like '26, '27, try to pull, pull that off. And again, we're, we're always continually looking for grants for this stuff, but a lot of them are depending what kind of equipment they're looking at. You know, some of these systems are all inclusive where you can picture it in a big square that comes in and they keep running around separating out different things, but you can get that equipment from
But you can get that equipment from anywhere with AI and optic sorters and everything. You could get it anywhere from, you know, you know, a million dollars to get what you need, or you could go up to four million dollars in a heartbeat, depending on how much you want with that.
So when the building gets done, it will have the old equipment still in it?
Correct. It does have more storage for recycling.
Okay.
So until it was built with the anticipation that eventually we'll be upgrading equipment.
Okay, so the process will still be the same at first?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
I remember when we did this ARPA money, at the time, you said one point eight million for updated equipment. So ARPA money did the building, and then at that time, you said one point eight for new equipment. So something that was brought to our attention when we were divvying up that money.
There'll be an order that you do it so it makes sense? You don't wanna convey it without something else?
Well, anybody else?
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
It says cover additional costs for special collections for residents. What does that mean? Like today, we pay extra for appliances?
No, it wouldn't be that. It'd be more of the, because it comes out of our funding for like the clean sweep and special events like that.
Oh, okay.
Where we have the hazardous households cleanup days and that.
Where there's five hundred people lined up.
And we get a grant for like seventeen thousand and it costs us sixty thousand dollars to.
Sure, to do it, yeah.
So this would also cover that.
Still be paying extra for appliances, and this is just for general recycling?
Correct.
Anybody else?
No added service to the public. They're still bringing in their own recycling. You're not going around picking it up?
The adding service to the public was by adding bins that Steve would talk, had talked about, and we're adding more bins in four locations now, so.
And I believe there was a truck, additional truck where you'd have three hauling instead of two. And so conversation was operation-wide updates for service.
Yeah, and I don't wanna give anybody the misconception that that's gonna happen, you know, January one of twenty-five either, because it's gonna be a work in progress.
But you don't wanna have, you wanted to get this stuff done ASAP because you just don't wanna have bigger.
Have to come in January twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate to identify this as a fee to get the program started at least? And the action might be taken at this time?
Right, if you're, if you're agreeable at this time, I mean, there's an action item on here. And what we do then is put, put this in the budget for twenty twenty-five as we start wrapping up.
Pamela?
Just a quick question as far as what does this look like for those that are already paying, like Waterman, for example, for recycling? I mean, is that going to be seen by them as like a double charge? I mean, I understand that they get curbside service versus hauling it into.
Waterman doesn't recycle.
Waterman doesn't recycle.
So there's no one right now that picks up?
Olson, sorry.
Oh, that's, because I was thinking there was still some.
Yeah, Olson Sanitation, Farmington picks up my recycle.
Okay, I was thinking there was still some curbside service, so I'm sorry, it wasn't Waterman.
But yeah, that, people could very well think that, that it's a double charge. But it's available to everybody and we're increasing, eventually gonna increase service to everyone. And everyone can use the bins and, you know, at the recycling center itself, so.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
Do these other places bring it to you now or not, or they will after?
Some of them do, not so well, correct, right. But like Mo said, that there's been quite a few discussions amongst the haulers that if we were able to upgrade all our equipment, then we could go to a single stream and then more haulers would bring theirs, which in turn would increase revenue.
Because most, most haulers pick up single stream, they pick up one bin and dump it all in there. Where all our bins are separated because we have to bring it in, dump it, push it in this pile. We don't have the ability to short, sort out OCC and the cardboard from the bottles and the cans automatically.
So I would pay my normal amount and then I'd pay this once a year, though?
Correct.
It's only one?
You could pay us more if you wanted, but.
I'm sure you'd take it.
Does this be on your tax statement, Ken?
Okay, Fran, go ahead.
Can I make a comment? I don't have a question. So, thank you. So this, this is the charge that would be on the tax bill of improved properties. So I worked and lived in Barron County for years. You know, like they said, I think, you know, we're the last county in the state that is not already doing this. I just think it sounds like a win-win for us to make it self-sufficient, to improve the service to the people who live here. And then also to free up a portion of our levy so the board can decide to fund other things that need to be funded, that that would be really helpful.
Okay, anyone else? Now, if you move to eleven, see the possible action regarding this conversation that we.
Make a motion. Get out of.
Oh, I'm sorry, are we, where are we? Oh, committed as a whole.
I second that.
All right. Need more discussion on that? All in favor? Back now to number eleven. Any possible action on the discussion in reference to recycling?
There is no action needed, Mr. Chair.
No action needed?
We'll include this in the budget.
The proposed.
The proposed budget.
Okay, in other words.
Your point, after this discussion, do we, do we pick a number or do we bring it back to the general government?
Number has been picked for you.
What?
You can amend it.
After the fact?
Right.
But I'm saying, with no action, do we, do we have, this go to a committee?
It'll go to general government with the fee schedule.
Okay.
Okay, then we're moved to twelve. Appointments made by the chairman. There are none at this point made for the next month for the ad hoc committee that we've created. So I have nothing else. Go to thirteen, confirmation appointments by the county administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have four different committees that I need to appoint citizens to. I don't know if you wanna do these one committee at a time?
Go ahead.
Wanna do them one committee at a time?
Well, whichever you prefer, I would assume that would be the logical thing to do.
I, I would recommend doing each individual appointment at a time.
Okay.
Rather than an entire. I think it's only the one that has multiple, right?
Right.
There's one that has two.
Okay, so I would, just for.
Okay. The first appointment would be Mark Kop, a reappointment to the Board of Adjustments.
I make a motion for approval of my board of adjustments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Our roll call? Go ahead.
I mean, you already voted. Wanna roll call on top of the voice vote?
We didn't, yeah.
Okay. Does everybody understand what they're voting for?
There were, there were too many noes on it, to my estimation.
Oh, you thought it was close, is what you're saying.
So Pam Garvey.
Yeah.
Tracy.
Yes.
Dan Rock.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly. Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
No.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Fran Duncanson.
Yes.
Beth Arcan.
Yes.
Keith Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
No.
E. Rowdy.
No.
And Steve Wornell.
Yes.
There's three noes and twelve yeses.
Three, that's pretty loud. All right.
All right, Mr. Chair, the next one is to ADRC, the Aging Board. It's a reappointment of Elaine Voucher.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion to reappoint Elaine.
Point of order, it doesn't even.
Yeah, it's not on here.
It's not on the list. I do believe that the county administrator appointments in general would be enough because there's absolutely no controversy as to this appointment. If somebody felt like there was some controversy, certainly name that committee and place it on next month's agenda.
Any comment in reference to that appointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Go ahead, approval.
The next is to the Veteran Service Office Appointment, a reappointment of Jerry Waller.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Go ahead.
Next appointment to the same committee is Joshua Hoffman replacing Gary Johnson. These are all recommendations coming from our Andrew Buzler.
Need a motion, huh?
Motion to approve.
To approve and seconded by.
Second.
Number one. Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Go ahead.
All right, next is Health and Human Services Board. This one, I had nine, I had nine people to vet through. We had four standing members on this and five applications for this committee. So took a lot of thought, looked through these, what was best for the county. And staggered terms came up with this. So two of these appointments will be two-year terms. The next, the next two will be one year, and then next year, I'll either reappoint or point someone new to a two-year term, and that way every year, we have the opportunity to either replace or reappoint someone. And with staggered terms, that doesn't mean that it's a term limit, it's just that we have, you have the option to reappoint every two years. So one of the appointments is a reappointment of William Aliva for a two-year term.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
Can we vote on each one of the citizen appointments individually?
That's what we're doing.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Anyone opposed?
Oh, didn't I say that? Approved. Go ahead. No opposed.
The next one is a reappointment of Rita McKee for one year.
Motion for approval.
She's a reappointment.
I'll second that motion.
Motion being seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? None.
The next one is a two-year new appointment of Gay Magnafichi.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made to approve by.
Brad.
Jeremy, then seconded. Add it.
It was first Brad, second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, so for discussion, I'm just going to just read a statement that I've written. It shouldn't take more than a few minutes. So as Chairman of the County Health and Human Services Committee, I have some comments regarding this agenda item. You know that the current citizen members are Bill Aliva, who we just approved, Dr. Arnie Loggus, who has not come up yet, Sabrina McKee, who we just approved, and Sabrina Metta. So Sabrina works as a registered nurse practitioner. She has a doctor's degree in nursing and is currently in practice at the Cumberland Clinic. She's a Polk County resident of the Towne Kinley. And then Dr. Arnie Loggus, I'm not gonna introduce because most of you probably know Arnie from his years with the Sacrum Medical Center. These people have all expressed interest in continuing to serve on the committee. And I don't see any reason to make any changes at this time. A concern that was brought forward at the last county board meeting about staggered terms has been addressed. The county took that under advisement, they corrected that, so the terms are staggered as appropriate. As the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, it's my responsibility to define meeting procedures and work with other county officials and committee members to accomplish that. I want to be clear that I express my appreciation and my thanks to Ryan, who was here tonight, and also to Gay for their interest in serving on the committee and their commitment to public service. I don't support Gay's appointment to the committee, and I'll state the following reasons. Health and human service citizen members are nonpartisan positions. And that's something Gay isn't exactly known for. Now, we have a big tent and we have room for everybody's opinion, and we wanna celebrate freedom of speech. We need to be mindful that we're here to serve all of the citizens of Polk County. At last month's board meeting, several of our county officials expressed concern with various county board members, citizen members, and officials expressing concern about them attending meetings virtually. Gay has another six months to serve in the Assembly. And then it's my understanding that she possibly will be wintering out of state. So in-person attendance is going to be an issue, whether or not she's gonna be able to attend in person. And as the Chairman of the Committee, if she is on the committee, I guess we'll have to address that. Our county administrator has made comments about political pressures from citizens to appoint her. What concerns me is there seems to be amongst some people somewhat of an expectation that we're gonna displace people who are better qualified and longtime committee members because a partisan politician is suddenly interested in serving on the committee. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, not trying to pick on Gay. I just don't think it's appropriate to have a sitting state representative of either party, of any party, sitting on a citizen committee, no matter what their party affiliation is. I did speak to Malia about incompatibility of office statutes, but she was kind enough to clarify for me, and she does not feel it applies in this case. You know, we currently, we have a good team of knowledgeable, nonpartisan citizen members who work well with each other. They work well with the county board members who sit on the committee. They're very dedicated to health and the welfare of the citizens of Polk County. They guided the county through a global pandemic and advise on many topics such as smoke-free air, mental health, addiction, harm reduction, and child welfare. So my statement tonight, in my opinion, is to let them continue to serve in their jobs.
Any other comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I share, I share your thoughts on that because, you know, it's what we pay our administrator to do. These political influxes and, you know, just makes his job harder. And it's not something we need at this level. So I share exactly what Fran said about it.
Any other comments? Go ahead, administrator.
I have one. I, although I had many phone calls on these appointments, I did look at them as what was best for the county. And what is our county moving forward with the HHS board and what their goals are, even with the resolutions just passed for a mental health facility? And what members and citizen members could help us do that, help us with that heavy lift? And I looked at all those. You know, I reached out to Dr. Loggus, made comments at the, at the last HHS meeting about stepping down and stuff, and I wanted to clarify with him, and I made comments. Talked to him this morning on that. You know, I did not make these decisions lightly, nor did I have any free bias or influence on them. So I looked at it, what was best for the committee. I talked to some of the citizen members on their, their concerns and ideas and their willingness to serve. And also, uh, some of the applicants, I looked at with what was written down and others, if I had questions, I reached out to them to get my answers answered to them. What their, um, ownership was of being on the committee, so just so you know that.
Any other comment, Johnny?
And my twenty-seven years, uh, the, the doctors and nurses position, you realize today the stress that they're under. And until Dr. Loggus came along, I have never seen a, a doctor at a, one of our county board meetings. I think probably there was a half a dozen times when I, I did see a nurse, but going back to, uh, Dr. Old Simon said was, uh, was the coroner and the doctor in the committee and then, uh, uh, replaced by his son, John, and, uh, Dr. John. And, uh, uh, that's why we have a coroner now that's, uh, a medical examiner, because doctors aren't be able to, uh, spend their time and nurses also. We're very fortunate now that these four people that we have in place right now. I, I think they've been at every meeting that I've been to and so we're extremely fortunate to have nine people, uh, present at the meetings. It never used to happen, so it's my comment on participation.
Anybody else? Comments? You have a motion on the floor to approve Gay Magnifici? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think this should be looked at upon as no different than our county board members change every two years. Um, and I don't view this as, as any differently. If, if, if these committee members never change, that would be like the county board never changing. Um, and I think it's better to change them. Uh, not all at once, I'll say. Um, and so by bringing in one every year or two, um, that's, that's just changed no different than the county board is.
This is addressing that, is it? In my mind, is it not? Council?
Yes.
This is addressing that issue. Thanks. Uh, any more comments?
What else for a roll call?
Ask for a roll call vote on Gay Magnifici.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Rock.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Jay Luke.
Yes.
Fran Dunkinson.
No.
Russ Arkand.
Yes.
Keith Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonner Prize.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
No.
Steve Wornall.
No.
Kim LaGarvie.
Yes.
Three no's and twelve yeses.
Okay, do you have any other appointments?
Yes, I have one more. Um, the last one is, is a year appointment of Dr. Loggus back on, uh, a reappointment to, uh, aging.
Yes.
I spoke with, uh, Dr. Loggus this morning. Um, he's willing to serve, so I placed him in this one-year slot. Um, give him time if he wanted to, uh, was thinking about getting off there, but he was engaged and he said he wanted to be reappointed to the committee and serve and join that.
Need a motion for him?
And I move the approval of Dr. Loggus and seconded by.
Second.
Steve, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For the same sign. Any more appointments that you have?
That is all, one for three.
That's all. Chairman's report, we've been working on the mental health issue and, uh, as was confirmed tonight overwhelmingly. So obviously, uh, the efforts that we've approached, pretty good. Uh, other than that, uh, I have really nothing to report. And, uh, I think you made a great decision on, on moving on mental health. Somebody in the area had to do it and Polk County was, took the lead and proud of. Administration report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a few things, um, from our IT department. If you have not received or picked up your new computer, please make arrangements, uh, with IT to pick up your new laptop. Everyone, if you haven't done it.
Especially Supervisor O'Connell.
You knew from, not the ones we got in April.
No, if you haven't received, if you didn't get one from in April, I think there's a couple outstanding that did not get through yet.
Oh. Johnny, you got one?
He's dying already.
Yeah, he's, I'm sorry, go ahead. All right, anything else?
Yeah, sales tax was up, uh, in May, five point eight percent, so that puts us at two hundred and six thousand seven eighty-six over last year so far this year, so.
Oh.
Things are going up. Um, economy overall is looking good. Uh, inflation's coming back down. Uh, right now, uh, bonding rates dropped again for counties to bond, um, as we're coming up in the budget cycle, which is, uh, means we'll make more money borrowing money than we will spending our own money. So that'll be part of the budget process and one of our, uh, levers that we'll pull to, um, help fund our CIPs and our infrastructure out there, but that is all I have for a report.
Thank you for that. Supervisors?
I've got one.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, Kim and I both attended the, uh, North, uh, Wisconsin Land and Water Conservation Association meeting that they had, last week.
That's Friday.
Last Friday, up in Spooner and, um, just a couple of notes on what, what they discussed. Uh, the, a big thing was because with all the lakes, the big deal is wake boats and what they're going to do around wake boats because it's starting to be a big problem on the lakes as far as, because those, and I didn't know this, those boats have bladders in them and when they put them in the water, then they fill up those bladders so they sit lower in the water, so they make a bigger wake. So they can do kneeboards and whatever behind them, like surfing behind them, but then that, because they sit in the lower water, the low, the lakes that aren't as deep, it turns up the sediment and, and all the bad stuff that's, that shouldn't be turned up is getting turned up. And then it makes a big wake when it goes in, so if it's close to shore, it's doing erosion all along the shores of the lake. So there was a lot of discussion on, because there isn't any really any regulations and then if they do put regulations, people are, how do you enforce those regulations? Because, you know, they'd like to see those wake boats be five hundred feet from the shoreline and those types of things, but then how do you, how do you enforce that? So that was a big topic of discussion and, um, but it was interesting since we sit on the Environmental Services Committee to, um, you know, to listen to that group and what they're working on and, uh, they do a lot of really positive things at training sessions all across our area. So it was worthwhile going to it.
Anybody else? Fran?
Well, um, I attended the Wisconsin Work First about Development County Consortium in Amity this Friday, um, to learn some more about the work that they do. Uh, one of the things that they do that may be of assistance to our quest to locate a mental health facility in this area is the training programs that they offer, uh, for people who work in that field and for displaced workers, for example, with the hospital and O'Clare closing, they help those people obtain other employment as well as train for maybe a different position within the same field. There also is some grant funding, um, available, uh, through them that also could, uh, perhaps be of assistance with that. I also attended the board meeting of the Polk County Museum a couple of weeks ago, which was, um, very interesting and a lot of fun and, um, got to know those folks a little better and see the wonderful history of our county and all of the hard work uh, that they have put into that and the wonderful job they do. So I would urge anybody who hasn't been there to go there, bring your family, tell a friend, tell a neighbor, have a party on the lawn, but, um, it, it really is just, um, really, I think, kind of a centerpiece of the community that's underappreciated, uh, that people should take a look at.
Any else?
Yeah.
I attended the Bone Lake Management Meeting last Saturday and Cher, Sharon just heard what I, it's part of what I heard because a couple of years ago, I went to the, uh, annual meeting and there was quite a discussion between the whole group on wake boats and having their radios turned way up and on and on. Well, the silent sports people don't like them because of the big wake, but I see it's in the outdoorsman, Wisconsin outdoorsman, that's a big issue in Wisconsin. But the, the comments that were made at, on Saturday was that one person, or Bone Lake, made up an ordinance to just have the boats down the middle where it's deeper water because the lake's a shallow lake and you get a lot of wake. So they said that they are, they, they believe the wake boards are using that down the middle, doing what they're supposed to do. But then the one person said, on the board said, well, yeah, but they still got their radios really loud. Well, then the president said, well, all the pontoons like to go to the sandbar and he said, they probably, they have a lot of loud radios too. So. Both sides of every, when everybody's kind of discussing, so.
Yeah, do good entertainment.
Anybody else have any supervisor comments?
Steve, did you have any comment?
What?
Ja- John and I attended the Wisconsin County Highway Association Conference.
Yes.
And we sat in the class and we learned how to conduct ourselves properly in this meeting. Couple of times we looked at each other and said, is that all you're supposed to do? Right, John?
Robert.
Anyway, it was good because, you know, it, we should address the chair.
Just ask me.
And. Learned a lot of other things, a lot of good technical advice down there and stuff too, so.
It was a three-day conference at the Chula Vista.
And that's the only thing they got done?
It was extremely well attended and extremely informative. And his one comment I just wanted to make, although it was a highway comment, just here, family health, uh, we just talked. Anybody in Northern Wisconsin, that topic just comes up, so.
Good.
We're initiating it here.
We need all of the support. Anybody else? Believe me, these wakes is an issue I attended meeting two years ago on, up the gas and it's, there was some real technical information in reference to there.
I'm a layperson.
So it's something that's, you might, might want to check out, research or read the article that you can find because it's going to be an issue to, uh, to our lakes associations and as we're members. One more thing, Russ?
Well, it's quite time yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anything else? All right. How long do you want to wait?
Maybe three.
Waiting for us. Need a motion to adjourn.
I don't know.
Mr. Bean is seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Waiting for the brewery to start?
Let's do the leaves. Before I end it?
They're out in California.